Okay, we'll call meeting to order. We'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Today is August 11th for 2025, for our regular session meeting. And we, again, we welcome everyone and we'll go ahead and get an approval on their agenda tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Both? Okay, now we will do our pledge and our prayer and tonight we'll have Commissioner Green will lead us into prayer and Commissioner Walker will lead us into prayer pledge.
Our Father, we are so grateful that you have allowed us the health and the strength to come back to this place this evening. Father, we thank you most of all for forgiveness of sin. We thank you for your son died on the cross so we might have eternal life. Father, we pray this evening that you would help us to conduct the business of this county in a way that's favorable to you and what is in best interest of the folks of this county. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your motion to approve, minutes. Second.
Second. All in favor of saying aye? No additions, Mr. Williams?
That's right.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Both? Okay, thank you. First on the agenda tonight is in appointments, we have Mr. Chuck Abernathy here with the historic Carson House update. So Chuck, the floor is yours.
I'm going to be very brief for this as we'll pick up and give you an overview of ourselves and activities at the Carson House. Carson House is going to see a major transition. It's going to become much more of a valued asset than it has been for a couple of reasons. One, the interpretive center, and two, we have got a bundle of energy and good ideas here with Teresa. So I called Ashley and asked about having her come in, introduce herself, and give you, give you a brief overview. Thank you for your contribution to the Carson House and your assistance with the interpretive center, and it is, it is really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Teresa, real quick, Teresa is an educator. She's Shandowin.
Shandowin.
She'll correct you.
Shandowin.
She's an educator, lives in Avery County, but on the McDowell side. She has a lineage with the Carsons and McDowell County that she might tell you about. She's got tremendous ideas and we're really excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you so much for having me here this evening. Yes, I'm from LA, Lower Avery County. I have ancestors that go back to Rutherford County and they trace all the way up to Avery County. If you've heard of the banners from Banner Elk, that would be my family. But I do have collateral ancestors to Joseph McDowell and to Rachel and John Carson and to the Lidle family and to the Bergen family. So I love genealogy and I'm so excited after 43 years of education that I get to take all the talents and all my experience and my career and wind up in my retirement job. The capstone of my career is to be able to serve McDowell County and to be at the historic Carson House. So I guess my biggest claim to fame is you probably know a couple of people that I educated and I have had great influence over. One of them I went to school with, that would be Dudley Green, and we square danced together.
He's a good dancer?
He's a good dancer, of course he is. A little bit younger than me, I was, I was a bit older than him. Now, my greatest claim to fame, and I mentored him, I served as an advisor to him when he was running for office. He has done quite well in the area of politics and serving the state of North Carolina as well as McDowell County, that would be Josh Dobson. I was his favorite, I am his favorite teacher of all time, so, him. And then I worked with Mark Garrett when he was principal at Avery High School. And I did a brief stint in administration, found that wasn't for me, you make a difference in those four walls in the classroom. And, but I did have the privilege of making my first hire, and that person is none other than Tracy Grid. He was the first person I ever hired as a principal, so.
Well, you are real connected.
You are, no, you all stole two of our greatest educations, so that's okay. We'll, we'll leave it at that, but they, they've served you well and will continue to do so. So I'm just going to give you just a little overview of the historic Carson House, you can see that on your slideshow. We began in spring of 2024. You have David Moore, the archaeologist, Chuck Abernathy, and you have Mr. Gilbert?
Hallfield.
Hallfield, H-O-L-L-I-N, yes. I'm memorizing all these names here. And we started the Moore Cabin, the restoration has been complete. We'll be sending out information, we will be dedicating that on September 28th when the OVT, the Over the Mountain Men, come to the Carson House. So you can see what it looked like before and you can see what it looks like now that we've completed it. Then we had September 27th. And that brings back some memories. And the only thing, luckily, we had some damage, all the boxwoods are gone now. We lost the heating and air conditioning and that was replaced. But we, we're about this far from it covering the first floor and coming up to it, it came up to about that close. So we just thank, thank God that we've, nothing happened to it. Okay, so this is a real treasure. So we have the building of the interpretive center that it started off, and I thought I'd give you some pictures, let you see just a little bit of an update. And yes, last couple of weeks ago, we had historical dirt because they tore down another part of the house, but this is what it looks like on the inside. And you can see that darker wood, you see that darker wood there to the side? That is an outline of the original foundation, and that'll be really visible when you come in and see the house. We did an outline of the foundation inside the house, so you can see what it looks like. And the upstairs will be a great place to have special collections. There'll be a window looking out at the cabin and then more of our collections, we'll be doing some display cases. This kind of gives you an idea, there's the upstairs, it's all been finished, the woodwork has been laid, and to the right is going to be the Genealogical Research Center. It's going to be named after Martha Jordan, Genealogical Research Center, and the Greenlee Library, because the Greenlee sisters are the ones that established the original library. I already have several bookings, we've got groups, working with families center and work with family research. We are planning to be a huge research center for families and for local genealogical groups. I have a waiting list already. And then that was the outside one, that's the gift shop, that's the lower part of the house, that's being completed, we'll have a little eating area there and a gift shop. And then this is what the original rendering looked like, and that's what it looks like in color. And this is your treasure gem in McDowell County in western North Carolina. And I do believe it is a treasure gem that you have. I've been to a lot of places, and I will say that I have never seen a county in my years of education where they have put something like the Carson House. They've put it, they've provided money, they've looked, and they've supported it, and they wanted the education of their children to know their local history. I plan to take a lot with that and work with Crystal Handby, work with the school system, but I do believe that you have one of the best-kept secrets in western North Carolina. And I think you'll be seeing a lot of buses coming through here to come to this house.
What, currently the school system, you guys are on school board, is the third grade that they go to?
It's the fourth grade and the eighth grade. So the fourth grade, September 28th, we have the Moore Cabin dedication, and that next day, we have 400 approximately or more, fourth graders that come to the county, and that will be there the next day, and they'll be doing all these different tours. Now this year, they won't get to go to the interpretive center, but they will next year, and that'll be, that'll be in addition to that, we'll make it longer. But they go through the house, they do all the colonial crafts, the OVT men work with them and show them what it was like. And then we have some events, so that is our soft opening, we kind of have some events planned just to kind of keep us busy through October, November. December is our Carson House Society Party for Friends, so if you are not a member of the Carson House Society, please make sure you see me sometime, and we're going to be doing that. And then we have our candlelight tours.
We've also got our regular board meeting out there.
I know, it's October 13th at 4:00 PM. So if it's warm enough, you can have it out at the Arbor, there's lots of nice room up there. And we do have some heaters.
We always look forward to that one.
Yeah, so we'll be there, and that'll be an exciting one, so hopefully we can give you some chores or show you some exciting pieces that we have for upcoming collections.
Now, I noticed that on your dates, y'all have done in the past where you have during the month of October, Halloween, some, what do you want to call it, spooky ghost tales goes on out there?
We decided to forego that this year. We thought about doing a fall festival, trying to see, my goal this year is to build up our membership to double our partners and our society, to double the membership and increase that. Also, I'm working on doing a Carson House Descendant Society where it's people that are linked DNA-wise, so that they are, it's an exclusive society, you have to be linked by DNA to the Carson House. And then also to do corporate sponsorships, I already have a couple already lined up. So I am a busy girl.
What grade did you teach at school?
Well, that's an interesting question. Nine through 12 was mainly the year, the grades that I taught, but I did do a stint in, in middle school before I retired. I had a good friend that was a principal, said, please come down and help me with this, this group. I said, okay. And then I lasted about two weeks, I retired in 2021, I lasted about two weeks in retirement, and I went across the border to Tennessee, I started teaching there. So I ran, I ran a virtual program for them, and then I, last year, I did contract work, but I did, I worked at an elementary school, which is very interesting. So all grades.
Glad to have you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I would just state that just by having Teresa with us tonight, I think their board is very good, made a very good selection to lead that group.
Excellent, we welcome you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next on the agenda, I would be, would be the tourism update, and we have Sam Odom here with us tonight. Yeah, there, Sam.
Doing well.
Good, good to be here. Do we just need to advance this on this for the presentation?
I can do this back, but I thought it was going to be live.
They're watching so they can see.
Comes the reinforcement.
Thank you, sorry for the technical difficulty there, but great to be with you again, and just to say thank y'all for everything you've done to help with recovery, same for William, it has been a long year. We've got a mixed bag of tourist results, more or less, but overall, we are in a good place, so I will just go with the presentation, hopefully you can all see that on your slideshow. But I guess the biggest news that we have starting off is that the Blue Ridge Traveler is now Destination McDowell. I think most of you've seen this rebranding that took place, we actually went live with the new website on September the 1st, so great timing there, but we took our branding, we wanted to refresh it and give ourselves a little more of an identity. The Blue Ridge Traveler was a great name, it did wonderful for us for search results, but it wasn't leading us with very good traffic as far as quality traffic. So a lot of people were just looking and Googling Blue Ridge Mountains and they weren't really sure where they were looking. So going with this Destination McDowell really gives us that identity, I think, that we're looking for, so when people land on our website, they know exactly what they're looking at and where they're headed. So I think this is going to be a lot clearer. We've rebranded the visitor guide, you can see right here is the latest edition, and we are about to explore a new possibility to take the magazine one step further and create a true magazine-style guide. So we're looking at pricing that out right now. It would be a lot more free-flowing, it would not be just a list of businesses, it would be much more inspirational for somebody looking through it. So more to come there. But more about the branding that we talked about, we basically took each destination in the county and gave it its own sub-branding. So for instance, Marion is our main street. And speaking on those terms, we just got, there was some new branding for the city of Marion, we partnered with the Marion Business Association, and so you're one of the first people to really see this, this is where the Marion Business Association and the city will be moving to very shortly as far as branding for the city. So we'll be incorporating some of this messaging and logos into our advertising going forward, but for the time being, we'll continue to use that Main Street where, where Main Street meets the mountains. We've also tagged Lake James as the blue way, and then we've gone with Base Camp for Old Fort, the gorge is Lindell Falls, and then last but not least, Little Switzerland is the outpost. And you'll see as we move forward, I'll show you some more examples about how we're using these sub-brands in some of our creative advertising. Backing up just a little bit to some of the other things that are going on within the TDA, the good news is that the Wayfinding Project is moving forward. We have accepted a bid and have moved forward with a 10, excuse me, 11 signs that will be installed, they are actually being fabricated right now. You can see the design for the signs, and these will be all over the county. This will be phase one of that sign project, and then phase two will happen in the next year or two, where we already have 10 more signs approved for the county. So we have 20 signs approved from DOT right now, and the first 11 will start to be installed sometime this fall, and you'll see those. More or less, this first round, we focused a little bit more on the Old Fort area, a little bit over here in Marion, but we knew with that new rebranding for Marion, we didn't want to go too far into the wayfinding. So we'll back up and get with the city about the next phase for this local Marion wayfinding, but we do have some more signs we want to install up along the Parkway in the Little Switzerland area, and then as well over in parts of Old Fort. Some other strategic plan projects that we're currently funding right now also include the Arrowhead Park over at, behind the fort, Davidson's fort there, they are hopefully working on the road as we speak to get that access road paved, and the park will have this official opening this fall. The Old Fort streetscape is moving along, the town just accepted a bid to move forward with that, so it'll be breaking ground on the Old Fort streetscape in just the next few weeks, actually. And then we also had a partnership with the Portos Trails Conservancy for the Wolf Pen Loop Trail on the south end of the county. And then we've also funded a portion of the Mill Creek Park development in downtown Old Fort. So now looking at actual revenue and some other statistics that I pulled for you, there's a slew of data, and you really have to figure out what's best to look at when you're looking at overall the level of activity. And then of course, the biggest thing that we look at is our occupancy tax collection. And so right here, as you can see, overall comparatively to what we've been through for the last few years, we are really only down just about 4% year over year. We don't have figures, this is through May, actually, and so when June comes in, we really hope to be just about level with last year, all things considered. So you can see occupancy tax over the last few years, going back roughly about the same. We had our biggest year in 2024 with 1.2 million over, a little over that collected, and then this year, we hope to be right at that. This next graph here, I think, sort of shows it a little better as far as tax collection and the dips, particularly when you look back at September and October, those two months, we were down close to 40% in September and about 35% in October. And then as you can see, when November comes around and December, we actually surpassed the previous year, and we've been tracking ahead of previous years up through the remainder of the year. So occupancy tax, we are in good shape. Most of that, I think, is still looking at overall visitation, is probably still from our hotel guests that are staying in the area. Short-term rental properties tell a little bit a different story. I have some figures, we'll show you in just a second regarding that. But this Placer AI Insights report shows us that we had a little over, close to 99,000 visitors in July, which was really year over year about 10% down, month over month, though, it was up 4.9% from June. So again, July continues to be one of the busiest months of the year for us. I pulled a Zartico Insights report for you. Zartico is a company that tracks actual real-time sale data and overlays it with credit card data. So basically, it tells you who was a visitor in your county, who was a resident, and whether they're in-state, in out-of-state, and where they're spending their money. So this actually helps us more than level of visitors, it tells us where we need to focus our advertising. And then you can see basically from this graph that more visitors are spending money at accommodations, food, and outdoor recreation. You can see really almost 92% of in-state visitors and 89% of out-of-state visitors are, are visiting some form of outdoor recreation while they're in town. How do visitors spend in the destination? This sort of shows you that in a snapshot as well, you can see accommodations, particularly from out-of-state, at 35% compared to only in-state. Visitors about 10% on accommodations spent, food and beverage, a little bit of the reverse, though more local visitors spend more on food and beverage than some of the out-of-state visitors do. And then you can see gas, service stations, retail rank along the top there. This graph shows you the five origin markets based on geolocation data. You can see our out-of-state visitors, where they're coming from, Knoxville, Tennessee, Atlanta, Georgia, Greimel Spartanburg, Nashville, those are the main destinations you can see. But then when you look at the spend data, it flips just a little bit, it's a little further away. So you have people from Miami, from Fort Lauderdale, from Georgia, spending a little bit more than those local drive-through markets. Top five origin states, you can see Tennessee, South Carolina, Florida, Georgia, and Virginia. So nothing really new there, we pretty much know where our visitors are coming from for the most part, and that's where we're spending a lot of our marketing dollars too, in these top markets. Talked about the short-term rental market, this is a report from AirDNA, which basically scrapes websites where you have property management companies or you have sites like VRBO, and this will scrape data and give us a snapshot of what's going on in the county. So you can see for the month of June, we had a little bit of over 1.5 million in revenue in June for short-term rentals, and then the year-to-date was a little over 5 million. The same pretty much for occupancy rate. We can see we're averaging about the same as in years past, so overall, a pretty good sign compared to the fact that the perception is still that western North Carolina is a lot of it closed or in repair right now. So we're, we're still fighting that headwind, but you can see an occupancy rate of 51.5% so far with an average of 41% is still pretty strong compared to previous years. The latest economic impact numbers from Visit NC are from 2023, and you can see that domestic and international visitors to and within the county spent $111 million in 2023, which is an increase of about 3.8% from 2022. The latest numbers will be released again this fall, so we should have the 2024 numbers in the next couple of months. But you can see we're employing about 661 people in the county right now with a total payroll of about 27.3 million. County tax, you can see state tax revenue for McDowell County, total of 4 million, and then about 3.9 million local taxes were generated from sale and property tax revenue. These are all from Tourism Economics, which we get through Visit NC.
Let me interject something right there, I, I just can't, can't help myself. We weren't tracking all of this data like we are now until you came here. I know you've got a lot of help, and I know people help you tremendously, but my hat's off to you for tracking all of this. You came in here, I was starting to serve on the tourism board with you when you first came here, and this is one of the first things that you started talking about was, what do we do, where are people coming from, who are our visitors, what are they spending their money on? And this is, this is exceptional.
Thank you, and it does help, you have to have some data to really go forward and know where you're spending your money, and it sort of gives you that extra confidence, I think, when at least somebody else is telling you that, so I appreciate that. Just to keep moving along with some more data, we, this sort of shows you a little snapshot of accommodations used in the region, and again, you can see 50% of that in the mountain region is hotel motel, again, private homes, though, still heavily used, and then from there, it's a little surprising to see bed and breakfasts so low, and really RV and tent, I would have thought would have been a lot higher in that as well compared to the number of campgrounds we have, but.
Well, we took a big hit with Tom Johnson's, too.
That's right, well, you see, right there, it did, so it's surprising to see again data like this sometimes where it goes against what your sort of thinking. Top activities spent in our area for overnight visitation, you can see, of course, the most popular activity, visiting friends, families or relatives, shopping is second, and then rural sightseeing, and then local folk arts, crafts, historic sites, they left, but the Carson House is definitely one, we just met with Teresa a couple of weeks ago, which definitely has some great ideas for like the bus market, motor coach market, and really just that leisure traveler that is interested in history. You can see that's highly ranked, 26% of people, so a lot of opportunity there. And then on down there, no surprise with hiking, wildlife viewing, state parks all closely behind there. Now, just to talk a little bit more about the marketing side of things, this is the relaunch of the new website. Like I say, it went live back in, in September. We feel like organic traffic is, is very strong, in fact, probably better than the domain change, so we were a little worried about switching domains, but it has held up very well. This is just a snapshot of some, where we're placing our advertising, some traditional publications like Blue Ridge Journal, Smoky Mount Living, Our State Magazine, all these do wonderful stories on us all the time, a lot of times we're buying ads and they're giving us extra editorial space in those magazines. And then a lot of digital still, a lot of programmatic advertising, search engine marketing, we're doing things online, nationalparktrips.com, which is a part of the Outside Magazine Group, and we've done other things with Romantic Asheville, and we're doing some radio and billboard advertising, too. We've got a new digital billboard that's outside of Charlotte that rotates its display, so we actually, it's not a static billboard, it actually shows various, we can, we can program it and have a different message every day if we wanted to do that. We hope to probably do that more next year with specific festivals for that market, it's actually on 85 as you leave Charlotte, one towards Gastonia on the right, so a great spot for people to know what's going on up this way. Just some ad examples, basically showing you, you know, how we're using this branding, we have some sub-tab lines, taglines, Small Towns, Big Adventures, and then No Boundaries are a couple that we've been using. And then when I talk about the sub-branding, what we can do is really dive deeper into a specific location, like this one is more focused on Marion itself, talking about the food. This was an ad that ran in Southern Flavor Magazine, which is distributed along the coast of South Carolina. And then we're doing some, a programmatic ad on the right, which talks more about fun things you can do on a brisket, biscuits and beer tour through the county. This is some branding for the Little Switzerland area that we've used, again, talking about the outpost, really focusing on the family vacation, using the orchard and some of the Parkway in that shot. And then these are more Old Fort-centric ads, the Base Camp, adventure begins at Base Camp. Adventure Begins at Base Camp. And we've got one that says Sayer Local Flavors at Base Camp. So we're using, again, a little bit of outdoor recreation. And then we also have one showing some of the wonderful food at the new watershed that just opened, actually. I've got brochures. I brought a couple with me, but these are some examples of the latest brochures that we do have. We've just updated our High Spirits Trail brochure, which talks more about craft beers, stilleries, wineries in the area. We also have the new Old Fort brochure, which has a great map of downtown. And then we just launched a new digital passport called McDowell Heritage Trail. And this is going to be really cool. It's going to be, you don't even have to download an app, but you go to this, scan the QR code on the front, and there are 20 sites throughout the county that someone can go visit. And as they go in and check in on these spots or send us a picture, after three, they earn a sticker, McDowell Heritage Trail sticker. And they complete 12 sites, they can come into our office or let us know, and we can mail them. We have frisbees right now, and we're giving them out as a prize. And then we'll change that up, and we've got everything from the Week's Track sign up on Curtis Creek Road to sites long up at the orchard. So it really does dive deeper into sort of what makes McDowell County really special. And we just launched this about two weeks ago, excuse me, about a month ago. So we've had about three people already complete, and we're really just getting ramped up on promoting some of that. So we're excited about the Heritage Trail. We also did a great new series called Underexposed, which really focused on the mountain biking community. So we brought in an influencer that is a Pivot Cycles ambassador, and he came in and spent a week in Old Fort and had the trail. We took him up to Katsuma and took him on some of the sections of Bernard Mountain Trail that was open. Had a little bit of problem with some of the trails not being open, unfortunately, particularly the Upper Heartbreak Ridge and Lower Heartbreak, which isn't open yet. But once we get those open, we'll be in full force back with our mountain biking groups, because that's one of the more, I think, of a destination trail, that's really one that people are going to come and visit and really go up and do. But it is, if you have a chance, there's a link in the actual presentation. If you click that Old Fort Underexposed, it takes you to the actual series, and you can watch it. It's about a 15-minute-long series that just focuses on mountain biking. And here's a brief shot of a 30-second clip that we are running right now, if it has sound or not. But this is just an example of the 30-second spot that is running on streaming television on some various platforms like Roku or Samsung out of our area. Sorry, didn't have sound, but you can still watch that as you move forward. A little bit about our public relations going on. We have hired a PR rep and worked with Audenon Marketing, our marketing firm, and went on an in-state media mission back in the spring. It was very successful. Immediately out of that, we got NC Weekend to come. They did some stand-up shots. They came during the Trails of Trains Festival, and we were featured in basically the June, I think it was like middle of June, it had a series of Lindell Cowards was on there, but some of the other stand-ups were all done right in Old Fort. And then you can see Our State Magazine featured Marion in its marvelous Main Street story back in March edition of 2025. And we also have a new media page on our website. That really is more for journalists that can go, they can request images for the area, they can also look at some of our latest press releases, itineraries, and things like that. We visited Charlotte, you can see, we went to a couple of morning shows, one over in the Hickory area, and then the other, excuse me, one in the Winston-Salem area. And then we did Positively Charlotte down in the Charlotte market. And both went great. They really focused on the recovery efforts going on, and we were just letting people know that our businesses are open and we're ready for visitors. We continue to work with outside, our outdoor NC, the Great Trail State Coalition. We are an official trail town in the North Carolina Trail Guide, particularly the Old Fort area is the focus of that, but it has all of our five marquee trails in the county listed in the Trail Guide. And just to finish up, a few more stats I'll show you. This one's always interesting when I check it again right before I put this slide up. And we are still in the number-two slot for national park spending. Top 15 states by visitor spending, California, number one, North Carolina, number two. So it's still a very strong market for us, anything to do with a national park, whether it's the Smoky Mountain National Park or the Blue Ridge Parkway, or even something like the Carle Sandberg Home over in Flat Rock. All those things help market our area to a more national audience. The Blue Ridge Parkway, you can see recreational visits still number two in all the national park units, right behind the Golden Gate National Recreation Area out of San Francisco. But the Blue Ridge Parkway, even with it being closed last year, much of it for so long, they still had over 16 million visitors on the Blue Ridge.
You know, we probably would have topped at number one if we hadn't had that courage.
I think so.
I guarantee you would. So close to the Golden Gate.
Really, like 400,000 or so difference. You all know the Parkway's troubles. Many of the sections are still closed. I think they've probably been here to update you, but if not, the news basically is everything, at least from Lindell Falls north, is just about open now. Everything from Little Switzerland over to Cracking Gardens is still closed, and some of those are looking at at least a two-year closure in effect. So they're in what they call Phase Three, target completion, fall of 2026. So we hope that's true, but I've heard estimates is up to 2027, so we will see. But the good news is they hope to open access to Mount Mitchell State Park this fall. But the bad news is that we're going to be accessible up through the Asheville section or going through Asheville up through Cracking Gardens. But we are working with them. We've let them know that that Upper Heartbreak Ridge Trail is really important for us to get access to, and they are going to work with us. So if they can get access to the Mount Mitchell, it's really just another 100 yards or so down to the trailhead for the Upper Heartbreak. So that would allow us to at least get some shuttles up there, like the mountaintop shuttles can still take people up there and at least get people access to that trailhead. But we'll continue to work with the Park Service and the Forest Service on really all the openings and closings going on. I pulled some G5 trail data for you, too, just to give you an idea of what's going on on the trails. And you can see the graph really shows a lot. This is the Point Lookout Greenway Trail Counter. And you can see the orange is 2025. So we had a good rebound in the spring, and we leveled off, and we're not compared to the pink line of 2024 and 2023. 2023 is probably going to be the marquee year, because that's when Point, or the Bernard Mountain Trail opened. So you had a lot more people using the Point Lookout Greenway to get to the Bernard Mountain Trail. So I think you had that spike really in 2023 when it opened there in July. And then 2024, though, we were still tracking really well. And then, of course, 25, we have not, we don't have those numbers yet. You can see they're not going to come in as high as 23, 24 there. But still, a monthly usage of close to 1,500, 2,000 people is still not bad. We had, just hard to believe, but a little over a year ago was the reopening of Catawba Falls back in June, and we had a media day there where we hosted about 30 influencers. And we're really riding that wave of Catawba Falls opening off in the summer, and then, of course, Hurricane Helene hit. And that sort of shows you what happened on this graph. This is monthly visitors at the Catawba Falls trailhead. And you can see, really, it was closed in May, and then we had a record, over 25,000 people came in June. It trickled down through really about 15,000 right before the hurricane, and then bottomed out in November. And of course, it reopened in early 2025, and you can see the visitors start to trickle up. And we had, even in this year of July, we had a little over 15, so it looks like about 17,000 visitors. So still shows you a good amount of usage for sure at the Catawba Falls trailhead. And last but not least, this is the Gateway Trail Counter. This talks about the usage types. So you have cyclists, then you have total users, and then you have total pedestrians. And you can see going all the way back to when this trailhead opened, the usage. And of course, you can see where it bottomed out again back in the fall. And that is all I have for you. I'd be glad to ask any questions. And of course, this you have as record, and I can share more with you, but these are just sort of the snapshot, high-level kind of things that you might be most interested in hearing.
Shannon, we appreciate what you've brought to us tonight. It's very informative and very interesting to us, and we thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank y'all. South of Overture, we'll have a new visitor center in about a month.
Great.
Great. Great.
Next on the appointments, we have the transit public hearing. So we've got Jason Hall here for that. So Jason, forward, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hard to believe, but another year's gone by. It is time for our annual funding hearing. I'll just jump right into this. For, these figures are drafted by 27. We have to stay ahead of the curve a little bit. So for our admin, administrative amount did go up this year to $204,000. It was the same in '25 and '26, so it was 189, so I'm glad they bumped that up. The county share for that, of course, 15% would be $30,660. And we do need some new vans. So you'll see that the combined capital request is 315,000. That would represent three ADA-equipped transit vans. The way this works, when the vehicles reach 100,000, they're eligible for replacement. And by the time they go through the grant cycle, they're probably going to have 180, 190 by the time the new vehicles get here. So this will be replacing the three vans that we got in 2021 at a cost of $105,000 each. And the county amount for that would be $31,500. We don't have any vehicles in the fleet that are not handicap accessible. I've always ordered ADA minivans. I think that's important for what we're doing. So that's it in a nutshell. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have about those figures or how that works.
Mr. Chairman, I just made a comment. If we can spend $62,000 leverage and get $519,000 in funding for these vehicles, that's a good deal.
Good deal. Transit system's doing a great job. You know, I hear nothing but good reports. So we're very proud of it, and the county's very excited about it. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
We do need a public hearing before we approve.
Yes, sir. The chair can declare a public hearing.
Okay, they'll declare us in the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Does anybody present want to speak to this request?
Anyone on the right or the left want to speak about it?
Move and come out of public hearing.
Second.
I'm a favor, sir.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the submission of Mr. Halliwell for fiscal year 2027.
Second.
I'm a favor, sir. Aye. Any vote? Okay. That takes care of it. Thank you very much, Mr. Jason.
Thank you. We're going to give you a super quick update, just so you can have some figures to bear in mind. New express service, which started in May. We've had over 1,500 riders on that, which is well beyond anything I was anticipating. It's been a great success. It fills up quickly, just about each day. So that's going really well. We're very pleased with that. We've had nothing but positive feedback about that. We had some friends up from the Department of Transportation last week, took some pictures and did some interviews, so they'll be putting some things on social media about that. And overall, we're on track for over 30,000 rides for county year 25. So we are very busy. We appreciate your support. And if you ever have any questions, concerns, feel free to let me know.
Thank you.
Comments? Thank you, Jason. Next on the, the Helene update, we've got the new NC program, Mr. William Keller. Forward, yours, William.
Mr. Keller, before you start, I may have to slip out during your presentation. I apologize ahead of time.
No problem. Thank you. I'm sending it to Jason, but I think he just walked out.
He's going to suffer. He's out of here.
I just wanted to say how much I enjoyed working with him as a department head. He is a solid partner for the Mercy Ops Center and our department on whatever we get into on a daily basis if we were in the transit. That is an outstanding job, and same with Shannon, enjoyed working with him on recovery. I appreciate the opportunity to present again this month on Hurricane Helene recovery. Today marks 321 days that the Emergency Operations Center has been focused on Hurricane Helene response. And we are still laser-like focused to ensure this county recovers, that this county makes a full recovery. As I've started off these presentations, reminding, I know the board understands this, but for our folks in the audience or those watching at home, there's a roadmap for managing any type of disaster, no matter what type it is. We all, as emergency managers, follow the same roadmap to ensure proper preparedness, response, and recovery. We are currently in recovery operations for Helene, focused on debris management, private roads and bridge repair or reconstruction, housing repairs, hazard mitigation, and emergency watershed protection. For debris operations, the Army Corps of Engineers has ended waterway debris operations. We are currently assessing, we had a meeting with them and FEMA this afternoon, to ensure that we get a proper brief out of what debris that was picked up based upon our request to the Army Corps shortly after Helene. And we submitted multiple phases of waterways to be cleaned up, Phase One through Phase Three. And what we are waiting on is the map to come back telling us where each submission point, whether it was picked up, deemed ineligible, or is still pending. With the Army Corps' operation ending for waterway debris, our intent is to move towards the State SMART program, which operates much like the Army Corps, except they use a state contractor. And I would remind the board that early on, Mr. Wooton and our team made the decision to do direct federal assistance, and that kept millions of dollars in costs for debris removal from being ran through the county, and it was directly paid by FEMA to the Army Corps. The SMART program works in much the same way as the state of North Carolina will pay the state debris contractor, and that will keep the debris cost out of the county's books, which is exactly how we want to manage these disasters.
That was an excellent move and decision on Ashley's part and your part.
Yeah, it told Mr. Wooton it was the best decision he'll probably make in his career. It saved millions and millions and millions of dollars from being ran through the county's books. There was an article in the Citizen Times last week talking about numerous counties getting denial letters for the debris operations that they have already completed and paid for.
Allison, her staff probably appreciated it, too.
So I can't say enough good things about how that has ran. This is the latest update from the Army Corps of Engineers as of August 10th. For McDowell County, 1.3 million cubic yards of debris has been removed. I'd point out, 15.5% of all the debris from Helene in the state of North Carolina has come out of McDowell County. For a rural county, that's pretty substantial. A million three is, represents a significant amount of coordination and then work by the debris crews that are executing these projects. The one mission that is still active with US Army Corps of Engineers is the Personal Property Debris Removal, also known as PPDR. There were 1,441 parcels requested. FEMA has vetted 1,326, so we have a little over 100 parcels that are still pending with FEMA for eligibility. A number of those are for demolition. And 1,294 parcels have been contracted. And 1,294 parcels have been contracted out of that 1,441. They have actually completed 795, so we still have a ways to go. Last week's rain and then the rain forecast for this week is going to cause another delay. The more we have these crews out in this type of weather, the more damage is going to be done to personal driveways. So there's a lot of days there's a ground stop on any type of work. Emergency Watership Protection Program, or EWP, this program is administered through the McDowell County Soil and Water Office. It is a federal program, but they are the local point of contact. EWP is designed for installation of recovery measures. Activities include providing financial aid, technical assistance, removing debris from stream channels. It still has to meet the criteria for, or certain criteria before it is deemed eligible. There's also the ability or potential to reshape and protect your road and banks, correct damaged drainage facilities, and then repair levees and structures and repair conservation or utilize conservation practices. We have developed, working with the local Soil and Water Office, an online submission form. This is very similar to what a number of other counties have done. And citizens who have an interest in the EWP program can go to McDowell.gov.com/Halleen and there is an EWP button there that they can click that generates the online form. They can also reach out to the local Soil and Water Office, who I said earlier is the local point of contact. Mr. Wooton, anything you want to add there?
Other than thanking Mr. Keller for assisting the Soil and Water, because we've got some transition there with our longtime NRCS person having retired recently. And so they're doing a great job there, our current Soil and Water staff, but Mr. Keller and his staff are able to force multiplier, I think was the expression they used, say, to kind of help out, you know, redirect some resources that have been worked on debris management, for example, to shift over here. So I know it's appreciated by me and I know them as well.
Private bridge, or I'm sorry, private roads and bridge repair program, the deadline to apply is August 31st. This is new since the last time we provided an update to the citizens. We have been messaging this in our weekly update that we continue to push out on our Nixle platform and social media. But any citizen who had a damaged or had a private road or bridge that was damaged or destroyed has until August 31st to apply with the state for potential assistance. We anticipate after September 1st that the state releases a program for citizens who took it upon themselves and repaired their private road or bridge after Halleen to be eligible for up to 50% reimbursement cost. It was $25 million allotted for that program. That will be a separate application and more information to follow. We don't have any technical details at this point. Emergency housing repairs and rebuilds. I think our team in this county have done a lot of things right with recovery. But I think history will judge this county and the folks who have worked on recovery, especially our VOAT, with being one of the strongest parts of recovery. There's just, there's no other model like what has taken place here. And I give credit to Jerry, Victoria, and all of the volunteer organizations that continue to show up at our Emergency Operations Center, sit around the table, problem solve the different things that pop up in between the meeting dates. And I was in awe last week watching this meeting. We had to add more tables, we had to add more chairs in the room. I had to step out and go to another meeting and I come back like 45 minutes after that meeting was supposed to end. And they're having all these sidebar conversations, deconflicting problems that have popped up or people that are needing different things. There's still folks that are still needing assistance. They have went as far as they can go with FEMA, they have went, pursued other routes, and then they're showing up and saying, "We still haven't lucked out our house." Those are just some of the common things that they have dealt with. But the work that the VOATs have done will go down, I think, as one of the strongest parts of Halleen recovery. They have completed 450 repair projects in this county. I was at a meeting with some of my colleagues last week and we rolled that number out. And people just look at you cross-eyed, I mean, they have no idea how the nonprofits have coordinated this. And it's because of these people that show up, many of them volunteers, and they continue to do this day in and day out. So hats off to what Jerry is leading, and he's a strong partner. And I think you saw that the last meeting I was here, nothing but respect for Mr. Lewis. 34 pending projects.
I'd like to see our board do a special proclamation to recognize him for the work that he's done.
As I said last month, it's like having another emergency manager right beside me. The way he thinks is spot on in a disaster. They currently have 26 rebuilds, seven of which are mobile homes. Samaritan's Purse again has come in with Jerry leading the way and making these contacts to solidify that support for these rebuilds here in McDowell County. And that is millions and millions of dollars that has been committed here. So just, here's an example, baptismal mission, Hawkins family, this was on our social media and has been publicized. This is what it's all about, is seeing this come full circle. And seeing a home that was literally destroyed by floodwater, this couple had to be rescued. And there's the North Carolina Wildlife Team that was part of the Swiftwater Rescue. And then just droves of volunteers that continue to come in. There have been thousands and thousands of volunteers from multiple churches that have been here this summer, youth groups, mission groups, that have worked under the direction of the VOAT to complete these projects. And then there's, there's folks that may have worked outside of the VOAT just to flood this area with assistance. They were at Old Ford Elementary School, assisting them with moving furniture back in, just outstanding support that they continue to provide the community. Hazard mitigation, there is not much, there's really not an update on hazard mitigation since I was here last month. This is the program that is moving the slowest at the state and one that we intend to have conversations with the state emergency management this week on the need of good communication with the applicants that have filed under hazard mitigation and then good, frequent updates back to local emergency management office. This is the same slide that I had last, last month. There has been no updates from the 25 parcels that were included in batch one. And then over the course of the next 30 days, we'll continue addressing the critical needs of our citizens through our VOAT coordination, looking at debris operations and switching what is left of waterway debris and then PPDR over to the SMART program. We are working with the SMART program on the city's water intakes to complete that debris removal there and the permanent repairs, as well as the Lake Tahoma debris removal. And I would remind you that the Lake, Lake Tahoma is an eligible applicant under our debris removal program because nearly three quarters of the drinking water for the city and then the Nevo water system comes out of that water reservoir. Housing repairs, continue coordination with VOAT and the nonprofit groups. And then currently, we have 16 FEMA reimbursement applications that are being managed by our office. And I think you'll get a full briefing on those next week. And then, of course, our Halleen hotline remains active nearly 11 months after the storm. And we look forward to moving the needle even more in the next 30 days to ensure this recovery is done right. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Very good report, sweetie.
And I will say, as we enter the peak of hurricane season, we are ready. We have conducted tabletop drills, our equipment is operationally ready, our staff is ready. So the next couple of months, I think, as you hear more talk about tropical activity, people's anxiety, we know, will be on the increase. But our message is clear, sign up for Nixle alerts, keep your phone on, emergency alerts at all times so you can receive them. Make sure you don't turn those off at night when you go to bed. And then always, no matter what season it is, maintain a 72-hour preparedness, non-perishable food in your home, drinking water at least a gallon per person per day. The basic preparedness tips and coordination and focus on emergency alerts from this county will keep people safe. And I won't let us worry about the tropical activity. We'll communicate it well in advance. And the next couple of months will be somewhat of a bumpy road for a lot of folks, but that's what we're here for.
Do you have any data on what is suspected to happen as far as the storm activity over the next month?
The official forecast is above normal activity, but as we saw last year, it only takes one storm on, on the right or the wrong track to cause a historic event. So this is something we watch every single day and I feel confident our team is prepared and ready to respond.
Well, you mentioned having certain items on hand for a certain amount of time. Is there one place they can, people who are watching can go to and look at that? There's a detailed list. If you could just share that app.
Yeah, absolutely. Ready.gov is an excellent website, not only for residents, but also businesses to make an emergency plan, covers all types of disasters, but ready.gov.
Thanks, sir.
And in closing, the last thing I'll say is, we are planning an event on September 27th. I guess this is a hold the date, more information to follow. It will be at 9:30 a.m. at Old Ford Elementary School to commemorate the one year since Halleen and remember those that we lost, but also recognize all of the hard work that has went into recovery by so many folks.
Sounds great.
Any questions?
Thanks for your comment.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make one comment to the board to piggyback on Mr. Keller's As it relates to our facilities, there's interest, of course, always with our parks, but his staff has been integral. And he mentioned next week, the plan is to have Ms. McLaughlin on staff, come to that meeting that you have, and then allow her to give an update on her FEMA workbook and how she is applying on the county's behalf, as well as the behalf of fire departments and other relevant agencies to seek maximum reimbursement from FEMA. And so, so far, so good on what's been submitted compared to, again, some of our peers. But on our parks, she has worked diligently with Mr. Kazee on submitting damage reports. There's been visits, there's been assessments by FEMA. And what they will do is FEMA, they will provide you a dollar amount. At this point, it's been for engineering only, not repair, where sort of a target. And we can then hopefully not exceed that target, but we'll revisit that. But, so we have put out an RFQ, a Request for Qualifications for Engineers that could help us with overseeing the repair of Sandy Andrews and North Cove, Greenlee Park and the PG area and Lindley Field there in Old Ford. And so we've sent out the RFQ, we have reviewed, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Kazee, Mr. Boyd, and myself reviewed those submittals. There has been a firm that was identified as the most qualified. We've contacted that firm. And so what we'll then do is try to negotiate on the contract with them and hopefully have that back for you next week. If it doesn't work out, then we'll go to the next firm, et cetera. So we are, in case people are wondering, you get questions for those three parks, we're working as fast as we can on that process. So again, we couldn't do it without Mr. Keller's effort and his staff, especially Ms. McLaughlin. So we'll hear more from her next week.
Thank you. One other thing, and William, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Samaritan Purse has committed to rebuilding X amount of houses here in the county?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
20-plus houses, I believe.
I think they've committed substantial amount of funding in years of investment.
So a special thanks goes out to Samaritan Purse for their dedication. All right, anyone else have anything? Okay, moving along next to the Order of Collection and Settlement, Ms. Linda Onyfray. Floor is yours, ma'am.
I am here to submit my tax year settlement for fiscal year 25, 24, 25, which was in your packets that you received earlier, and also a single bound copy of the 24 unpaid real and personal and business property taxes. We, we finished with a collection rate of 99.55%, which was an increase from last year's That .5 is a lot, just so you know. And also, so on a, our levy was 33.6 million. Our ending balance at the end of fiscal year was 152,000.
So you have 33 million plus you have not collected 150,000, which are up from previous year by a half percent.
.5, yeah, half a percent, but.
I, I think that you've done a great job and you should not stress too much over that small amounts.
And also in the, for prior years, 2014 through 2023, 2023, which is the delinquents, we collected 104,852,000. So, and that's really it.
One question, the amount that you've not collected, does that turn over to a collection agency at some point or you all just continue to?
We collect.
You continue to collect?
We continue to collect. That's what that, you know, so our 24s right now, because fiscal year began 25, 26, so now anything that's collected in '24 is considered delinquent. So now we just collect that through delinquents.
Got you.
Yeah. So now we, we collect it all.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we approve the tax settlement and order of collection as presented.
Okay, we have a second. We have a second. We have a discussion on it. All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Moving now to old business, out of May, and our old business is the water system project. Mr. Wooton?
Thank you. Just really quick on some updates on the Nevo side of our water work, our East End project. It, it has begun, I think I mentioned last month, the contractor for that project has been delayed from when they originally wanted to start in June. And so the level of beginning might be hard to decipher if you're driving by and looking for trenches and things, but they have initiated the work and there was a meeting this afternoon there with Mr. Riddle in attendance. Did my own inspection today under Phase Two A and B. We're getting very close to wrapping up Phase Two, which is great. We are starting to get some calls from folks of, hey, I see that water line coming down the road, can you serve my neighborhood? And so that happens whenever we have an extension. And so we're taking that information, probably too late funding-wise and time-wise to add anybody beyond what's already planned for the, that original $11 million we received. But, you know, there's always future funding we could receive for grants and things like that. So we always like to take notice and, you know, make sure we're bringing that to your attention. Did meet again with Mr. Riddle this morning about what we're calling Phase Three. This is around Randolph Road in Nevo. It has been approved by NC DQ, as I indicate. We're, we're having a little bit of complication with NC DOT on some of our encroachment areas with hydrants and, or some of our bores and open cuts might need to take place. And so I have a conversation coming with our district engineer to try to work out some, some slowdowns we've had there. So keep you posted on that. And then the small project around Exit 90 is getting through an environmental review and then we can, should be able to go to bid on that one. And I mentioned this last month and recently, again, Mr. Boyd and I attended a DQ
And I mentioned this last month and recently, again, Mr. Boyd and I attended a DQ training several weeks ago about grant opportunities. And I'll mention here, but as it relates to the next item for the area near West Marion Elementary, we're, as you directed, we're going to apply for any funding that comes our way, especially in the area around, you know, the Providence-West Marion Elementary area. As indicated last month, we, fingers crossed, we think we have enough funding to get from the pilot truck stop to the school, but we'd like to do more, of course, with the fire department especially there. And so we're full steam ahead with, with the Phase One, which I will call that, to get to the school. The Phase Two would be funding to complete the loop of Marler and Zion Hill, as you've directed. So we will be submitting an application on that by the deadline, which is at the end of September.
And Mr. Wood, what's the total dollar amount to do the whole project? And what's the dollar amount to get it to the school?
It was my recollection, without it being in front of me, to get to the school, it's, including engineering and everything, it's, it's about 5 million.
Was that, but that, that did include the pumping station or whatever?
To get that five does include the pumping station, which was 500 to 700,000 dollars. And again, we've never had to put one of those in since new territory for us. I might have to get back to you on that one. I don't want to, it was quite a number.
Can you have that to us by next Monday?
Sure, absolutely.
Because here's what I'm, why I'm asking, because if we've got, if, if we're going to do that project, we are going to do that project, but to me, it seems like we might, it makes sense to do, if we can cobbly together money to do the whole thing while they're already on site, instead of bringing another group back in, a separate group bid. I, I just wanted the difference from what we've got to get it to the school to what it is to complete the project.
Get that too, yes, sir.
Next Monday be good.
For clarity, for clarity, we voted for the project to get to West Marion School.
Exactly.
We have only given him the okay to try to find funding. We have not voted for the entire loop.
Exactly. I know, I second that motion, I understand. Yeah, I just wanted the cost to get it done.
Yes, sir.
And what the difference is.
Yeah.
The last item, well, two items here, the AIA, the asset inventory and assessment, this is a $400,000 grant we received from DQ, I think last August. Again, took us a while with Helene and everything else to get that RFQ process going. We did have a committee that met and selected McGill Associates as the most qualified engineer for this project. I do have their contract proposal in hand, and we finally did hear back from our coordinator at DQ. He has signed off on what is in the proposal. The only exception I'll note is they do require a 1.5% fee be essentially held back by the department for administrative costs on their part. And so he recommends in the, in the proposal there from McGill on page 56, where it talks about asset management software, that would be reduced down, and his recommendation, so we're not paying out of county funds, that would be reduced down, since that's a county purchase, the equivalent of their 1.5% fee, but leaving 9,000 for that. But other than that, he said it looks really good, and they will essentially handhold with us and the engineer throughout the process. So I'm ready to ask for approval with that one change on the software allowing for the state fee to be withheld. So again, no county funding, it's all the grant funds, and we would ask to approve the McGill contract.
Make a motion.
We have a second. We'll give a motion in a second. Discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Next is the county property matters. Mr. Wood.
Sure, it looks like I've got four on here, some action, some direction and some updates. So last month, you approved the concept, something you've talked about a couple of times, the, the Blue Ridge Processing. This is the company that purchased the oil processing plant on Ag Services Drive. You agreed with the concept last month of leasing the former convenience site to him. And so I have a draft resolution authorizing that. You asked for a recommended lease rate, and so I've put in 3,600 dollars a year based on the best we could find for what an unimproved site would be, but certainly up for adjustment if you would like.
And that is based on limited, what you would call comps, that's market rate, right?
Yes, sir, best I can determine. And again, what is in the proposal is that it would be no longer, you know, than a year lease. Essentially, what we try to do with our leases, whenever we do those, is to run it at least through June 30th, and then we can go month to month after that perhaps. But they would be responsible for maintenance and insurance and things like that, which is standard for us. I could go through each.
Do we want to make a motion for that as we go?
Well, the chairman's not here to call. I'll make a motion that we temporarily put Patrick in his chair till Tony gets back. And that way we can take action.
Do I hear any motion for this first project?
Make a motion to approve the lease agreement as presented.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? You're nine and one, papers say aye?
Aye.
And he's back.
Then do the second one.
So, Mr. Brown, the lease with the Convenience Center for Blue Ridge Processing was approved. So we'll let them know tomorrow and get things executed there.
Good deal.
The next item, the former DeVita space, this is square footage located on the lower level, the senior center building. This is a unique space, if you've never been in it, there are about seven or eight offices, then a very large storage area that was used for essentially, you know, products that DeVita would use for their dialysis. But also in the middle, there is the area where they would have the actual process take place every day for their patients. We, we have shown both areas and the lower level at times, but there's not been a lot of interest from private tenants, potential tenants on this side, just because of how unusual the layout is. I have, and I've reported this, of course, I've shown this space to different folks on the internal side of things, and, you know, made sure to bring that to your attention as well. But we were contacted by a local day program with interest in the space. They had understood it had been vacant, and they were interested in leasing it. And so just to be a little bit proactive, I did show the space to them several weeks ago and explain that generally, if you all approved it, my belief, at least at that point, we'll see is that it would be kind of as is, whereas condition, we're not going to do improvements for you. Now, if something were to break, HVAC or whatever, we would work that out, but we're not going to repaint the space, we're not going to refloor anything else. So I, I mentioned to them a lease rate that has been on the lower level there before of about 10 dollars a square foot. It's about 6,600 square feet, so that's about 66,000.
And that, again, that's market rate, correct?
Right, yes, sir, based on what we're able to determine and, and looking at Loop Net and different sources, it's, it's pretty average based on where it is. It's in a lower level, it's not a, its own location, own parking, et cetera, it is shared. So I want to present on their behalf the request to lease the space.
And they've agreed to that money?
I have mentioned that ballpark, pretty much right on that, and they were agreeable with that. Yes, sir.
Make a motion to accept as presented.
Make a motion. Say. They have expressed that they would love to move in just as quick as possible as well, so if we approve it.
So with it being presented, are you okay with the lease that runs through June 30th? Again, just to stay on the fiscal year at that 5,500 dollars a month?
I'm, I'm. We'll be agreeable with that.
Oh, that's good.
Okay.
All right, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Wood, you will contact them tomorrow, right?
Yes, sir, first thing.
Sign.
I have spoken to finance staff to say, you know, to kind of be on your toes, I guess.
Thanks, sir.
All right, under new business tonight, we've.
I'm sorry, I do have, I'm sorry, it's one of those long ones, a lot of headings here. So just two more, under Health Department Building heading. Staff was asked to report back to you on the, I guess, some background information on the Health Department Building as it relates to the usage of it and who's in it. Of course, the Health Department is in it, McDowell Health Department, which is essentially the trade name for the Foothills Health District. Just as a reminder for the folks, again, you know, as a board, McDowell County is part of a two-county health district with Rutherford County. It's now called Foothills Health District. The Health Department has occupied that building exclusively up until maybe, gosh, maybe about 2010 or so. Around that time, we moved our building inspections office out there for convenience for folks seeking permits. They had the environmental health right there, they could walk down the hall if necessary. And then apparently around 2015, there was some vacated space that was then leased to what is now called Via Health. It was a different entity name at the time. And so I, kind of backing up a little bit, there were some questions about, you know, who owns the building, what's their relationship and the arrangement and those sorts of things. So the county owns the building. The county of McDowell has always owned the building. The building was built, again, in the 90s primarily using revenues from the Health District. They used to have a home health program. If you've ever been in the building, there's like a far, there's a wing on the right has small little offices, those were home health nurses. And so they would come in in the mornings, do some dictation or what have you, and then go out and visit patients. Long story, make it very short, that function was essentially sold off from the district and those offices vacated. And again, that's partly where Via is. The lease with Via is directly with the Health Department, and anyone else that might be renting is directly with the Health Department. And it was pointed out that the county owns the building, but we are not leasing to tenants. So for various reasons, insurance and different things, it, it does make logical sense if we own the building to be the ones making leasing decisions. I cannot find, and I think there's been some outreach, Mr. Abernathy, about it, we cannot find any sort of written agreement that outlined the relationship where there was anything prior. A lot of people have come and gone since then, especially on their side. So the recommendation is to, I mean, you can leave it as is, but probably to change it up a little bit. So I have that as an option, but really leaning towards two. One would be lease the entirety of the building to the district outside of what we use and allow them to do what they want. So essentially leasing to them, and they can sublet, you know, however they would choose with different parameters laid out in the lease agreement. The other option I have here in your document is the, the county lease out every single square inch of the, the building to the district, to anyone else like Via Health that might be there and, and be an ultimate control, I guess, with the comings and goings with the leases. Now, if you do that last option, and I think I used the word urge to Mr. Walker earlier, I would urge you, if you do that, or any other arrangement that affects the lease, especially with Via Health, I would recommend, even if we were to receive the funding, that it somehow be passed through back to the district because they are using that funding from that rent payment to help pay for their function. So it's not just going into a savings account somewhere for a rainy day, they are using it for functioning. So again, I'm just trying to, if you were to keep that money, they might come back to you and say, we're, we need 31,000 dollars to make our balance, our budget balanced, can you help us out? So if that makes sense. So whichever option you prefer, just ask that you kind of keep that in mind with their current budget.
What's the current situation? If there is repair or anything like that that happens to the building currently?
It is primarily a county function to do the repair. It used to be all the district and when they were in much better shape, and then as their financial fortunes started to diminish, when they were losing those other funds, it was more of a 50/50, but it's, it's fallen more in the county over the last four or five years.
I'd make a recommendation that staff get a mix between the number two and number three so that the county is protected from the wear and tear, care, custody and control of the lease agreement. So we do, I would be very interested in knowing and agreeing to the lease of who it's going out to, but I would also like some monies coming back to our general fund for that type of repair, but then let the Health Department keep a portion of it as well. But we're, I would suggest that staff present something back to us next month.
Or Monday, that'd be good.
Monday?
Monday would be good.
Do you think you can get it?
I would second that motion for discussion purposes.
Okay. We've got a second to discuss.
Can you get it done by next Monday?
Sure. Can do that. I have, of course, spoken with the Health Director about this interest, and so he's, he understands and, but I'll, I can work on something with our staff.
Okay. Now, discussion, so you gave us information last month about the Health District. We went to the consolidated Health Model, and, and we talked about three different transit. We talked about DSS, and who's the third one, Ashley?
Senior Center.
Senior Center going under that model, which is great, fully support that. So we had discussion too about the Health District right now, and we're currently, as you said, in two, two counties in that district. And there's been rumors in the past where Rutherford County has thought about pulling out at times of the district. So you gave us information where we currently budget 660,000 dollars to the district right now, and you gave us an idea based on peer groups, what it would cost if we just went ahead and assumed that function under that consolidated Health Model and had all four of those under that model, which is being done statewide, correct, to some degree?
Right.
Okay. So the low side was 740,000 dollars, so we're at 660. So on the low side, we might look at 80,000 dollars in new money going if we assume or absorb that under that model that we're talking about the other three. So I, I had, I favor local control, and I favor the county, and I said it last month, looking at taking that function and coming out of the Health District so we can get more direct oversight, so we can, I mean, Patrick, you mentioned it, you asked the question, the county's already paying the maintenance costs. We're also losing rental income within the building and also the utilities, we're paying the utilities for the district also. So I think there might be a cost savings by consolidation that I want to pursue, at least a deep dive in and come back to us, because I think that we can do it on, within, within the county and do it in an efficient manner, and you've already got building employees in that Health Department currently that might be willing just to stay in the same building and just become McDowell County employees. So I want to look at that, and I know that we talked today about, you get some data and information. So I want, at least 30 days, you know, that's, you need time to really get all the data together to bring back to the board, but I'm really, as one commissioner, I, I'm ready to, if the data backs it up, to make that move too. Just one guy talking. If the data leads otherwise and states something different, I'll follow the data and.
So we're looking at your motion as a 30-day or minimum or?
Well, have we got, have we concluded?
I have a question about the rentals. So the, the district renting or leasing out office space, are they getting fair market, fair market value for those office spaces? Like how, how much income? Like, how much income are they...
I would say on the Via section, I would say that is pretty close, it's maybe better than some rates than you're getting locally, better for the landlord.
Just on value, not who they're subleasing to.
Right, and so I think there are some nonprofits that are getting like a discounted rate because they're a nonprofit.
Actually, what, $100 a month?
I think I understood that.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, it's 1,200 a year, but...
Which is under market.
Yeah, certainly that is. Via, I think they're paying at the 31,000 for the space they have, it's a pretty good, good return for the Health District based on, you know, available data.
I think the county should have total control of who rents the building.
Is that how it is in most county buildings?
You definitely have control over, staff is not allowed, by statute, you can delegate leasing decisions under a certain amount of staff. We've never sought or deployed that here. So anybody that's in a county-owned building, maybe except the current situation that we've found out about perhaps, but there's not other arrangements being made without your knowledge or approval.
Which was done in this case?
Or by a board, a prior board, just to be clear too. And again, just to be fair to everyone involved at the Health District, and I've communicated this to you, I think this is kind of a longstanding, I'll call it an understanding, that, you know, operational decisions as far as who could be in there and what was, I think, understood to be within the purview of the district leadership. And without an agreement, and again, if there's one in a dusty drawer somewhere we've not found, we've looked.
I agree with Patrick, if the board, if we follow the data and it says stay where you're at within the district, definitely going back to the first part of the motion Patrick made, I think, and concurrent with the chairman too, and Tricia, I heard her say this, I'm fully, I'm of the opinion that, number one, there needs to be a lease, gentleman's agreements are over. I mean, we live in a day of liability and lawsuits, we can't have somebody in our building without a lease, and I know you've worked on it, Ashley, I know you have, and I'm not just, I'm just saying, we've got to have a lease.
When they're in our building, they're under our insurance.
Sure.
And so, you know, that's just not good business to do that.
And also, the second thing that I want to say is, we control who leases, who's in the building. I think, I know they did a sublease, which we have had no knowledge of, but we can't allow that to happen as a government body. We've got to make sure that we vet out who is in our buildings. I mean, this, so...
So if I can kind of bring it all back together perhaps?
Yes.
So you want to have information on, and a proposal back on the lease next month, and information based on...
Well, at the lease, if you do that by next Monday, it'd be great, but if you can't, I understand.
Okay, we'll try for that.
Patrick made a motion, sets up to him to give you the timeline there.
And you were the one that said you could have it by next Monday, but I would rather it be accurate and right than quick and wrong, so...
The 30 would be, I think, you know, you would have a more...
I'm totally good to amend the second on that, Patrick.
So you're saying it'd be 30 days for you to figure out what a lease agreement would be, so that, is that what you're saying?
Our September, our September meeting, evening meeting, he'll have us something then, by then.
I will gladly have something here Monday at lunchtime.
I was just trying to clarify what it is you were bringing, a lease agreement, I guess.
You're dealing strictly with the lease agreement Monday, if that's when you want to do it.
And I...
I'm in agreement with that.
And you have asked for other information related to operational costs and things that you'll have Monday as well, this coming Monday. So I'll, again, I'll bring it back Monday, and if you want to deliberate over it and think about it more for the September meeting, you know, we'll be prepared for that as well.
Any other discussion? We have a motion to second on the floor. All papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
The last item, just as an update, Space Universal, this is a smaller space in the front of the building, I guess that's on the western end, a little over 10,000 square feet. I was told today that space is completely cleaned and more or less ready for a tenant, sort of like the one, two items ago with the day program, but more specifically here, TQA, which is a long-term tenant of ours, they have inquired about the space, would just like to, no commitment to create jobs, I did ask, but just to make some adjustments in the space, they would have currently leased. Said before, again, I can't make a decision without your blessing, of course, but just asking, are you agreeable to TQA doing a lease, much like has been discussed? If we do a longer one, it's more guaranteed money perhaps if they stay, but it can be complicated as well. But the last tenant was paying a little over $2,300 a month.
So they're just wanting to get more, lease more space within the building?
Yeah. And I would recommend...
They're a good tenant, correct?
Yes, sir. They pay on time very well, and they're the largest dollar-wise tenant there, even though they're not the...
Is that your recommendation?
It's easy money.
That does not go with the first property at 6,600 square feet at $10 a square foot. If we've got 10,000, it's, they're getting a good bargain.
It's rougher space for what it is, so it's more in line with, you know, what's expected for warehouse-type space.
Good deal, so it's more warehouse, okay. I'm good with it, I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all on that, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir.
And we'll move along to the new business, which first thing, under new business would be the solid waste enforcement. Mr. Wood, if you'll lead us up on that.
Yes, sir, you had asked the board, the recent meeting, based on concerns that you have, as well as those that are expressed to you, about enforcement of our solid waste ordinance in our community. Very quickly, and I was getting a little bit later, for many years, we had a dedicated environmental enforcement officer at the sheriff's office, and what would happen typically is you would have a retired deputy that would, you know, come back and work certain hours during the week. Sometimes that's all they would do, but sometimes it was that, and they would do, you know, traffic enforcement at a school or a church or something, or they would do some court duty at the, you know, whatever was called for. That position is currently vacant. There is a budgeted position, it's like a 19-hour position that is sitting there, not filled, has not been filled in many years. And so you asked for a recommendation at the time of how to better, or have somebody with a better focus strictly on that area where we're not asking deputies that are in, you know, enforcing domestic violence, you know, drug deals or murders or whatever else, to go check out a home with litter in their yard. So the recommendation is to take that solid waste enforcement officer position out of the sheriff's office budget and move it to the planning department. It would, recommendation, again, a part-time person who would, their sole duty would be to focus on those complaints that we get in, also with the abandoned mobile home ordinance, and we have quite an amount of complaints that come in on that one, to allow that individual, for he or she to, you know, again, go out and the, once a complaint comes in, go out in the field, you know, take pictures, do a site visit, perhaps not so much knock on the door, they don't have a gun, they don't have a badge, those sorts of things, like our deputies do.
So they wouldn't require, that position would not need to be, have the certification of a law enforcement officer, correct?
Not with a recommendation, no, sir, and we can enforce our ordinance civilly through, you know, letters and fines and liens, maybe easier than...
We need to make sure that our ordinance is updated...
Absolutely.
...to cover that, because that's the only way you can get, you'll ever be able to get this to work, would be through fines, letters, fines, and liens on property, and so we need to make sure that there's clarification on that.
Absolutely. And if it came down to it where it was so horrible, somebody could be charged criminally, and that's when you contact the sheriff's office for support, kind of like an animal enforcement.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion we go ahead and approve the part-time position that's already budgeted and move that to a part-time solid waste ordinance enforcement officer, and have that under Ron Harmon.
Second.
Any other discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be the budget update, Mr. Wood.
Just a quick hitter, you do have your property tax collection forward and your sales tax. There are, there's a project ordinance amendment for the transfer, ordinance for transfer station renovation, and an amendment for the recreational improvement project, and then two amendments, GF3 and GF4.
What's the board?
Accept as presented.
Say.
Okay. Motion second, the discussion on that. All in favor of approval of this, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any other, that's it on the budget?
Yes, sir.
Next is the administrative items, Mr. Wood.
Just two, you do have EMS write-offs and then a Nevo water leak that we were asking for approval.
I hear.
Set as presented.
Motion approved?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next under new business would be board appointments, Madam Clerk, do you have anything on that?
This is a first reading for the McDowell Economic Development Association. There are two vacancies, and the term limits of the two board-appointed members expired at the end of July. The current members have expressed interest in reapplying for these vacancies, but no applications have been submitted.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. We'll wait on those applications. All right, next, I mean, is tax matters, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir, these are routine, you do have your vehicle refund. I will note, maybe one item that's not necessarily routine under the releases and a couple of refunds, where we have, the line in Little Switzerland and elsewhere with Mitchell County was a resurvey by the state. Staff have been working to update our records before bills went out, and there were a few parcels that were not caught before bills did go out, and so some of the releases and a couple of refunds are related to that process. So I did make sure with Ms. Wiley that it's Mitchell County's business, but these folks are being billed by Mitchell, and then we're obviously billing anybody on our side.
Make your motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion second, discussion. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk, good. No one on this conference. Okay, let's move along to commissioners, and staff support, anything on that?
I've got two items, Mr. Chairman, so an update on our new animal control building, like to see that at our next big monthly meeting, and also an update on, you gave us one a while back on the Span-Neuter, where we talked about additional funding for that, and just give us an update on, see, we need to know where you're at on both those items.
Yes, sir.
All right. If there's nothing else, I hear motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.